Virtual Planning Board Meeting to order. And the first action is that, Paul, can you please read those first comments as to how you join us if you need to? It's on the agenda.
Sure be glad to.
Thank you.
Clerk of the Planning Board, I'm required to read this statement. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, E 38, paragraph 20, relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, April 28, 2020, public meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group conference. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. One, meeting will be televised via Thomas Community Television. Not on right now. Two.
It is.
Real-time public comment can be addressed to the Planning Board utilizing Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. The application will allow users to view the meeting, send a comment or question to the Chair of either the chat function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate points in the meeting. A, Zoom login instructions. I. Instructions and the meeting link for this specific meeting can be found at the following web address. HTTP backslash backslash thomasmas.us 1112 backslash planning board. I, I, please plan on 10 to 15 minutes of pre-preparation time to log in, though it may be less if you have previously used Zoom on the device you'll be used to access to this meeting.
Thanks, Paul. No, that's all you have to read, I believe. Oh, no, I'm sorry. But that's no longer applicable. This is just how they're logging in. That's if they wanted to send something in advance of the meeting, it had to be there at least five hours before. So first on the agenda is, Mr. Clerk, Secretary, the minutes of March 3rd, March 10th, and April 14th.
The minutes of the meeting of March 3rd and March 10th were previously submitted, but they had not been acted on. So I recommend approval of the minutes of March 3rd, March 10th, 2020, and the minutes of April 14th, 2020 as well.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you.
Charlotte needs to turn her mic back on. We won't hear a voice or vote.
Sorry.
Okay.
I'm gonna lose.
No. I assume you voted approval of the minutes, Charlotte.
I did.
Okay. We move on to Planning Board discussion. And we need to, excuse me, we need to have Rosemary entered into our meeting.
Tom should let her in.
Thomas?
He is up and coming.
There you go. Okay. Rosemary Carey is doing a presentation to us on the Climate Emergency Declaration, which is Article 37 in the town meeting warrant. She hopes to gain the Planning Board's support for this article. Please proceed, Rosemary.
You are muted, Rosemary.
Oops. Can you unmute her, Thomas?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. So I'm here tonight to ask for your endorsement of the Climate Emergency Declaration. Many of you know me as a member of the Energy Committee, but tonight I'm here as the petitioner and a town meeting member from Precinct 5. And even though I'm not representing the Energy Committee tonight, but the committee has endorsed the declaration. So, next slide. Tom? Thank you. Okay. Great. So here's the declaration. I won't, I won't read it because it's very long and we've seen it in the warrant booklet, but this is part of a Capewide Climate Emergency Initiative where we're asking, where people like me are petitioning their town meetings to ask the town to declare a climate emergency. And the language of the petitions may vary from town to town, but basically there are three things, three major points. One, that we recognize as a town that we're in the middle of a climate emergency and it poses a threat to the people of our town and property, that the town of Falmouth adopt as its policy to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to net zero at the earliest feasible time. And then three, that town boards and committees make it part of their decision-making process that they, to support this policy. So, next, Tom, please. So, if, if Falmouth does approve this declaration, then, then they'll be in very good company. Almost 1,500 jurisdictions around the world have already approved and endorsed a climate emergency declaration. And in the U.S., at least 78 municipalities, but the number's growing every day, and towns like Boston, Worcester and Met, Worcester and Amherst have already endorsed it. Next slide. So why does Falmouth need a climate, right, stop right there? Why does Falmouth need a climate emergency declaration? We're taking many steps so far to shore up our coastlines, protect our, our community from climate disruption, and we're just one small town and we're doing a lot already. Well, the reality is that the town of Falmouth still relies heavily on fossil fuels, and that is what scientists say is the main contributor to greenhouse gas emissions that are warming our planet. So our government at the federal level is not taking action, in fact, rolling us back. The state very much supports reducing that greenhouse gas emissions to zero by 2050. And scientists also are telling us that we're running out of time. We only have about 11 years to get this right. Next slide. So just please scroll on. Without big emissions, this is the type of disruption that we can expect or continue to see, rising sea levels. For example, Cape Cod loses 33 acres per year to inundation and coastal erosion. And sea level rise scientists predict would be one meter by 2050 in most scenarios and two meters by 2100. This is from John Holdren of the Woods Hole Research Center. Next slide. And so other impacts that we're seeing already here in Falmouth, again, I won't read the slide, but things that really are damaging to our community and our economy and saltwater intrusion, more frequent storms, loss of bird species, extreme weather extremes, heat waves, and people suffering from heat exhaustion. Next slide. And then globally, loss of our coral reefs, our food webs, our fisheries, more category five hurricanes and typhoons, wildfires, et cetera. The list goes on and on. Next slide. So these are the things that the IPCC, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, is telling us that communities at every level need to do. Decrease our energy demand, that's through our buildings and transportation systems. Lower emissions from our energy supply, so the choice of fuels that we use is key. Make renewables the dominant energy source by 2050, and decarbonize our electricity sector by 2050. Also, sustainable agriculture, preserving our open spaces, and planting trees. Next slide. You can scroll right on. And we do have these solutions. I, stop right there. Technologies like wind and solar now make great economic sense compared to the alternatives. And they're also better for human health and communities. So we've seen in World War II that when our country was faced with the threat of fascism, we got together and mobilized to change our economy to defeat fascism. And so the Climate Emergency Declaration is basically asking for that same sense of scale and urgency. Next slide. So how does this impact the Planning Board? So the Planning Board can play a very important role, as you are the most influential body on the built community in Falmouth. So going back to the goals adopted at the April 2013 town meeting, amend the site plan review requirements to require an analysis of maximizing solar exposure. Continue to support the use of renewable technologies and maximize those at every opportunity. Require a minimum of onsite solar energy production in, in new buildings. And work with other boards to create a municipal pilot program to build an EV infrastructure. Next slide. So already the Falmouth Select Board has recommended that this be passed, the Falmouth Energy Committee as well. We would love the Planning Board's support and to begin a robust conversation about what the Planning Board can do, what your plans are for addressing the climate emergency. Other towns, Brewster, Chatham, Dennis, Truro, have all, already endorsed the climate emergency before their town meeting. Next slide. So a number of nonprofits, businesses, and so on, about 30 so far, have joined a coalition to advance this climate emergency declaration. And that includes the Sierra Club of Cape Cod, the Coalition, sorry, the Cape Cod Climate Change Collaborative Association to Preserve Cape Cod and Upper Cape Women's Coalition among them. Next slide. More than 30 faith communities through the Faith Communities Environmental Network have endorsed it, and their, their congregations are very active in sustainability actions. So, next slide. And I highlighted the Falmouth congregations in green. St. Barnabas, Falmouth Jewish Congregation. Next slide. So people want action. The, we're at a point where we need to become even more serious and dedicated to solving the climate crisis. This was September 2018, more than 100 people from Falmouth came out to create SOS on the beach, to demand bold leadership from their, from their local officials. And that was our message. Next slide. But basically, it all comes down to, all of the planning that we do is really for the young people. It's their future. So we're asking the Planning Board to make decisions with this, this beautiful family in mind. They have to live with this climate, and we need to do everything that we can to ensure their right to a safe, habitable future. Next slide. So I respectfully ask that you support Article 37, the Climate Emergency Declaration. Look forward to your questions or continuing a conversation about this in the future. Next slide. And here is my contact information. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Does anybody have any questions of Rosemary or comments? Nope?
I do.
I think Paul does.
Okay, Paul. Remember, I can't see you here, so you have to speak up. Thank you, Tom.
Rosemary, thank you. I think to a certain extent you're preaching to the converted, and I certainly understand the issues as members of the Coast of Residency Action Committee. I have two questions. One is, you mentioned similar statements by other communities. How similar is that? I mean, are they identical? Or are they very, very different, you know?
They are very close, very close. Some, and I can't name the town right, but at least one is brought to the town meeting as a bylaw, and the rest are resolutions. The, our town leaders that I consulted with felt a resolution was a, the better route to go because it would give boards and committees discretion to make the decisions that, that, you know, the best decisions and within their purview. But the language started out identical, and as we went to our towns, they changed. We tweaked it. And that, the, the point, though, is that we're building a local and regional momentum for this, and hopefully we'll find ways towns can work together because we have all these energized volunteers and, and people who really want to see this, this work across towns, too. But right now, we're focusing on our individual towns with this, with individual town meeting resolutions.
The other question is, you mentioned in here, I guess they're all similar, the earliest technically and economically feasible. While that sounds like a loophole, you obviously can't put in a definitive date. But that seems to be a, putting it in and someone can put it off forever on that basis.
Right. Well, we know that Governor Baker has said that, you know, the state is committed to net zero by 2050. So that's the farthest out that would be acceptable because, you know, as part of the state, we are required to do that. And so the language of the technologically feasible is intentionally vague for that reason. But it's our hope that with conversations with the various boards and committees, that we can pin down certain goals and, you know, energized by this climate emergency declaration, getting a statement from town meeting that this is serious, we need to follow it, that we will, we will pinpoint these, these dates and actions.
Thank you.
Charlotte, you had a question.
Not so much a question, it's an observation. I certainly do support and endorse it as an individual, and if town meeting ever meets as a town meeting member, I would endorse it. But I find it a little odd that the Planning Board, when our Board of Selectmen has already endorsed it, we're part of the town. We certainly aren't going to contravene the Selectmen. I should think it would be all encompassing of the town rather than going to each individual unit within the town. And this, this board, you know that this board has supported that and has adopted goals that go along with that, but so it's more of a procedural question here.
Yeah. So from the beginning, our whole strategy was to gain support from the committees first. And it was a question of timing, I think. We met with the Select Board and they, they did approve it within the town meeting timeframe. So we feel that it's still important to get endorsements from committees just to get our message out there, tell them what, what this is all about, and then, you know, we'll hit the ground running after that on, on taking actions. So, so we, we still, I understand that we have Select Board approval. The boards serve the Select Board, so it's still, we feel, is to our advantage to get the word out, really.
I would say that there should be no problem, perhaps even taking a vote of the committee tonight, to support this because the local comprehensive plan has, I think practically all of these pieces in it as part of that plan. And that was put together and brought to town meeting by the Planning Board. So I personally don't see a problem with that, but I don't know how the rest of the board feels about acting on it tonight, even though it has essentially been acted on because it's there that we put together. Comments from anybody else on the board? Paul? Paul, your microphone's not on. Okay.
I think the issue is that the committee that Ms. Carey represents is trying to get as none, as many organizations supporting this as possible. And I think that's where they're going with this. It would have been nice to have all the committees in town supported and the plan. The Board of Selectmen's endorsed that. That didn't happen, but I think the intent is to get more organizations supporting this to have a little bit of chance of passing at the town meeting.
Anybody else from the board? Bob?
Yeah, that was my thought, too. It's, it's just a matter of trying to get all of us on board to show unity as all the town departments are on board with this. So I, I think we should take a vote on it and endorse it.
Anybody opposed to that? Okay, then I would need a motion that we can vote on. Would you like to make the motion, Bob?
I, I don't have the language, but I would move that we adopt, is it the?
We recommend Article 37 to town meeting.
Okay, I would move that we recommend Article 37 to town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
I believe we weigh in on every town meeting article eventually.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay. John abstains, and the rest of us have voted approval of it. Oh, I thought you had already done that, Paul. Sorry.
I'm muted. Sorry.
Ah, okay. So John abstains and the rest of us that are present right now voted for it. Thank you. And thank you very much for bringing this to us, Rosemary.
Thank you very much, Patton, and the entire Planning Board for your work. Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay, Thomas, you can make Rosemary evaporate now. Okay. Next on our agenda is King Pine Hill, AKA Louis Laurie Subdivision, request for covenant release from Steve Hadad. And this is multi-sectional article, I think. I asked Tom to put together, so that we can more easily understand it, the, sort of like a bullet list, so that we understand and have in front of us what we need to act on. And Tom has kindly done that. He will put that up first, then we will invite Steve Hadad to present his, I believe he has like a film clip that he wants to present to us. And then, so that Thomas will bring Steve in at that point, and then the Planning Board will ask any questions that they have, and then we will have a discussion with amongst our Planning Board members.
Thank you. And I did check, Steve is in the waiting room, so when we, when you give us the, the sign, we'll bring Steve on and his video is queued up. So subdivision, Louis Laurie subdivision is a subdivision and a special permit. It's actually called King Pine Hills, which I discovered after the fact, so we've been calling it alternately King Pine and Louis Larry. There was a subdivision and a special permit granted in 2000, January 2016 that was appealed. The Planning Board endorsed the plan in January of 2019, following the extinguishing of all the appeals. Mr. Hadad was not the original applicant. That was Louis Larry. Mr. Hadad purchased the property in 2019, and I met with Mr. Hadad around, in March, but at that point really didn't know that anyone was developing the subdivision until sometime later when he approached us about getting a lot release. But Mr. Hadad had since asked in a letter dated April 18th for a release from the covenants, a lot release. And he had asked not to install the approved water main and hydrants that had been previously approved in the, in the plan prior to. Now, we've done quite a bit of work since that point, conferring with engineering, water department, fire department. I've got about 40 pages of correspondence just documenting all the conversations and emails and things we've had to that point. So I'm gonna bring the screen up here. And... So this is the original, the plan that showed the original hydrant here at the top of the screen, and the new location that has been approved by the fire, the Planning Board so votes to change that. And if the fire department's fine with it, I don't know what the Planning Board would be too concerned about. I only jumped the gun there. So that's the, the old previous location and the new location. I just made it a little tighter so it's a little easier to see. Originally at the top of the hill, now at the bottom of the hill, right on the side of the driveway to get to the property here. So... The question's been front of the board, because this was a special permit and a definitive subdivision plan that was approved under a hearing, is do those changes require the board to hold a hearing and send out notices, the butters, based on the change? Now, in my experience in dealing with subdivisions, those things that sort of trigger the threshold for what would require a full-on hearing for a Planning Board to change something in a subdivision would be if you were gonna move the right-of-way. If you're gonna move the right-of-way from one side to the other, change that, that clearly triggers a new plan with hearings and as the lots and the frontages change. Now, sometimes you're in a plan and you're looking at moving things around within the right-of-way. If you're looking at shifting the center line of the right-of-way within pavement, let's say there was some particular wetland area or something that created an issue where you wanted to pull the pavement to one side of the right-of-way or other, that would be typically something that we might check with the board, not necessarily hearing, because we haven't really changed the plan, we just changed where parts are going into the plan. If the utilities are shifted, do field changes? We have that sometimes, a water line's supposed to go in, there's a giant boulder there, so we're gonna move a water line, we're gonna move a gas line, we're gonna move something. We typically check with a reviewing engineer to make sure that does well, and we reflect those changes in an as-built, so we don't hold up the development, and we let the Planning Board know after the fact that the gas main got moved from one side of the street to the other, as the case may be. And then if their subdivision isn't quite complete, if the binder course, and this is fairly typical, we put the binder course in but not the surface course of the pavement, those sort of things, the subdivision isn't complete, isn't done, but that's a pretty standard issue, and the subdivision is functional because the base coat is in, but the, but the top coat is not. So the first question we had up until this morning was, is the subdivision work complete? Does not having the water main and the hydrant in make the subdivision work complete? In communicating with Steve Rafferty, who was at a Board of Health meeting last night, he's a Board of Health guy, he's putting 18,000 feet of water line, he's a very busy man, so we've been communicating with each other as best as we can. man, so we've been communicating with each other as best as we can, and Steve has basically confirmed that the soup, that the hydrant is in the shop, the location that the planning board has approved it is fine, and after MassDOT approves issues, permits for work within West Falmouth Highway, the main will be installed. The concern is, you wanna make sure that all the utilities are in, so in this case, Mr. Hadad's done those things he needs to do, gotten this stuff to the water department, so all the developer at this point has to do is cover the cost of the police detail. So the question, is the subdivision work complete, is now moot because Steve Rafferty has confirmed that the, the main will be put in by the water department. Next question is, if the board opts to decide these changes could be made administratively, is there an effective mechanism to ensure that could be done? You don't want, in some, in some of the discussion along the way, the fire department was, well, would it be okay if they put it in, but no certificate of its occupancy were issued until the main was hyped, was, was functioning? Well, that shifts the burden from the developer to the builder to make sure that is in before they get a certificate of occupancy. But once again, that question is now moot as well, because the water department has reported that the hydrant will be installed after MassDOT's permit is received and the police detail paid by the developer. So next is, the last question is the lot release. So the board could vote, assuming that they're going to say that this is not something that requires a hearing to move this water main around, I would recommend that it's not, that the board could vote the lot release with the conditions in hand, provided we have surety for the work that needs to be done. So as always, we have our highway department, I mean, our, our engineering division, put together the surety, which is based upon MassDOT's weighted bids, because as we know, if we have to do the work, it's gonna be required to be bid, and they're prevailing wages, and they're not as inexpensive as the developer might get them done. That bond amount ensures that the work will be done, and the developer has got, and the town has got the means to do that, and because we know the rate is a little higher because it's, it's, it's prevailing wage, the developer's certainly motivated to get the work done because he doesn't wanna spend his bond on something he can get done for a whole lot cheaper. So at this point, the highway department or the engineering division has recommended a bond amount of $47,455. I think. And that amount is based on asphalt driveways and bounds to be installed, loam and seating has been done. And then a second bond amount for electrical utilities. Now, I did get an email from Mr. Hadad about four o'clock this afternoon telling me that that work had been done, but it's prone, it needs to have, be inspected by the engineering division before we decide that that work has actually been done. So at this point, we have that bond amount of, based on this work, the electrical work, the bounds and the pavement to be done at an amount of $47,000. $500, $47,477. So with that, let me get off the screen here. That's all I have, and if you're ready, Madam Chairman, we can bring Mr. Hadad in and get his video up as well.
We can with the board, does the board have any questions of what Tom has put together? Yes, Jim?
Tom, is, when's the last, in my history in the board, I never remember a bond actually being exercised, the town going in on private property and doing the work. This seems to be like a tremendous amount of bureaucracy for a very simple task, attaching the water and put, and the relocation of the hydrant is where the fire department wants it. This, do you, is there a history in our town? Are we trying to solve a problem here, or?
No.
What ever doing this?
No, we're following the regulations. The regulations require a surety be put in place.
I'm asking you a question. Do you know of a history in the town of Falmouth where we've had to exercise a bond to do this amount of work?
I've been here for two years, I don't know the history, no.
I don't remember one in my nine years. Pat, do you remember anything?
Not specifically, but I know we've had to keep bonds going because the work has not been done.
We've used the bond on Sunshine Development in Davisville, and we held them to that, but they eventually did the work. But thi- this seems to me to be a tremendous amount overkill.
Okay.
Did we even vote on testing? I thought when we had a vote.
Jim, this is, this is going beyond right now, this should be in our discussion, I think. You asked Tom a specific question, and so I'd like to invite Steve Hadad in now.
I, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, okay, John.
Tom, has, do you know if the application's been made with Mass DOT?
Yes, according to, according to Steve Rafferty, the application was made about five to six weeks ago. So at this point, the water department is waiting for MassDOT to issue the permit, and then they'll put the hydrant in.
So the town made that application?
Pardon?
The town made the application?
Steve Rafferty tells me in an email today that that application was made about five to six weeks ago to MassDOT, correct?
Okay, and the second question I have, have you, has Steve presented a plan for the underground electric? Have you seen a plan for it?
I have not.
And, and in agreement with EverSource?
I have not.
Because I suspect the conduits are in, there's no wires that have been pulled that I can see, and he, he, in that estimation that he had from the electrician, it didn't call for pulling the wires because EverSource does the connections, but I just would wanna find out where he's at with that, and if we could get a plan and, and find out what, what kind of a bond he had to place with EverSource.
Yeah, and as I said, I got an email from Steve about five o'clock this afternoon, he sent the attachments from the electrical, electrical folks, and my reply to him at that point was, well, we'll get the engineering division out there to do an inspection and see where we're at with that. So I don't really know what the, what the status of the electrical is.
Well, I'd like to see the plan that he had, he filed with EverSource. I see he has a number, I'd just like to see the, the plan and see what work has been done and what's left to be done.
Okay, anybody else before I invite Steve in? Okay, Paul?
I have a question. Originally, the intent was that the pipeline would be looped and be a hydrant at the high point. That's not the case now. The hydrant's at the low point, and the line is not being looped, as I understand it. Secondly, most of the material has been provided by Mr. Hadad, and then he has to provide basically police services for that work to be done. It would be quite a bit of a change from what was originally intended, and I understand why we went through that process, but I just wanna point out, it seems to be a significant advantage for making those changes.
Tom?
So when we were reviewing this in 2015, the fire department had approved the hydrant at the top of the hill, the water department had approved such as, had not, because they said that the main should be looped, the plan should be revised and resubmitted. Now, I don't know that that ever happened in 2015, but the plan of record we have shows the water main not being looped. So of the, of the options of the planning board, if, if the planning board could say, oh, well, you should do what, what the water superintendent recommended in 2015 and loop the main. In this case, usually the water department doesn't like a dead-end main because of potential effects of water quality. Well, Mr. Hadad has had the water services connected directly from the main and West Falmouth Highway, so that concern about a dead-end water main and water quality in that really isn't an issue here, because the main is only gonna be used for fire protection. The water services, the house will be off a different main. So whatever the pleasure of the board is, is what the board, pleasure of the board is. But the original decision was at the top of the hill, as vetted by fire, as vetted by water, Mr. Hadad has worked to have it moved, and essentially the fire department has said we can live it at the bottom of the hill, and the water department has says if it's fine with the fire department, we can live with it there. So back to those issues that the board has, does the board think it's, requires a hearing to do that, and what would the board's pleasure be in approving the new location or, or something other? But both locations now have been approved by both water and fire, either the top of the hill or at the bottom.
Now, I want to invite Steve Hadad in, because he has a presentation for us, and you'll get to ask some of your questions to Steve, and he'll get to directly answer them.
Okay, Steve, can you turn your mute off? You're muted, Steve.
Well, we don't have a picture. Thomas, can you take care of that? Okay, we don't have a picture of Steve either. Pardon?
He needs to hit, there he is.
Ah, there he is.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you, Steve.
All right, you, you want me to run the video first?
Oh, no, thank you.
All right.
First of all, good evening, everybody, and thank you very much for your efforts in expanding your computer skills to allow this meeting to go on tonight, the meeting, your past meeting that I participated in. I am heartbroken. I'm devastated. I've never been treated this way in my entire life. I've done a lot of projects in town. This has been the most difficult project for me ever, and I hope that you afford me the time tonight to truly explain to you where I'm at, what took place, and how I got here, because it's an important story to tell, to help other people. I could simply just walk away right now and, and let the chips fall where they may, but I have a story to tell, and it's not, it's not a happy story for me. And John Julie, you're spot on, you asked some good questions. So let me start out with Lou Larry was the high school administrator in town, and he was, he subsequently has died of cancer. I looked at this project for a long time, a lot of developers in town looked at this project for a long time, it's a very, very difficult project. I had to make a 400-foot cut down 28A of seven feet to expand the distance, the site distance. I've asked questions along the way to everybody. I got a, I got a water distribution system, I went in to see the girls, the water department, I said, there's a discrepancy on the plan, it's a six-inch pipe, there's an eight-inch pipe, what would you like? She said, you need to speak to Steve Rafferty. I said, well, I don't have an appointment, she said, let me see if Steve will come down. Steve Rafferty has been a gentleman, he has gone way beyond what he's needed to do for me with respect to the service that I receive from him and the entire maintenance area. Steve looked at the plan, and he said, this plan is unacceptable. I've never seen this plan, I don't want you to do that. What you need to do is, you should put in four two-inch lines off the main on West Falmouth Highway, provided that the fire department does not have an issue with removing the hydrant at the beginning of the driveway. I am, I said to him, can you put that in writing? He said, send me an email. So I did send him an email, and he did put it in writing. That's the email that I've furnished to the board. I went down to see Mel Trot. Mel, the water department would like for me to have four two-inch lines, but it would require that the hydrant be at the beginning of the hill versus the end of the, beginning of the driveway versus the end of the driveway. He said, that's okay with us, but I can't approve that, it's a planning board issue. I said, okay. So I proceeded along my project, knowing I was putting in my two-inch lines, I put my two-inch lines in. I had met with fire people, in fact, one of the, one of the fire fellows that I met with says, you know, in hindsight, having the fire hydrant at the beginning of the driveway, now remember, it's a private driveway, having the fire hydrant on the shoulder of 28A in my driveway, think about fighting a fire. A fire up on the hill, the fire trucks pull in, they see the hydrant, they hook up the hose, they drive up to the hill. If I had put the hydrant at the top of the hill, buried in the driveway, the firefighters would show up, they'd stop at the beginning of the driveway, run across the street, and hook up to the hydrant, it's 147 feet away. The location of the hydrant today, and it's presumably new location, is a tenfold better location. A, it's immediately seen by a firefighter. B, the pressure is better. If it was at top of the hill, that site is served by the, I think it's the Mayor's Pond Well. Top of the hill, it would have been above the well, the bottom of the hill, they're gonna get better pressure. The only reason why that fire hydrant was at the top of the hill was because it was a dead-end water main, and the dead-end water main needs to be flushed because of the water quality. So nobody ever in the water department wanted a dead-end main. The comments from Steve Rafferty back in 2015 said as much. He said there was an opportunity to be looped down to West Falmouth Highway, but those comments never made it into any decision. So I take offense, an exception, that I walked in and asked that I can change the location of the water department on 4/18. That's not what happened. I submitted my water applications after I met with Steve Rafferty in August, in November, I submitted four water applications for the individual services with attached plans. They were approved and permit request was sent to Mass DOT. The end of, at the end of the day, the water system that's going to be installed, that is installed for the record, there are four two-inch lines extending from 28A up into the lots, already installed. On March 9th, let, sorry, back up a little bit, a fire hydrant. When developers need to put in hydrants, the town has made arrangements with EJ Prescott and Mashkey, they have the town specs. You walk into Prescott and you say, I need a hydrant. You write him a check, in this case it was $8,600, they deliver the hydrant to Gifford Street. That's all required to do if it's on the shoulder of the road, the town takes over from there, it's their responsibility to install the hydrant. I would hope that, given where we're at today, that the fire department likes the idea of the hydrant on 28A, the water department likes the idea that they don't have a dead-end main, that the water distribution system that I installed is a moot point. It's a fine system, it's much better than what was originally approved. It was not my idea to change it, this, I was, did exactly what the, my, my covenant said to install the, under the utilities division, whatever they tell me, that's what I'm doing, that's what I did in both instances. I might add, I might add, I knew that my critical path was gonna be the location of the fire hydrant. I sent a request to the planning board, showing them a new location for my hydrant. I have still not received a response, it's been three weeks. The planning board, the planner sat on my request for 10 days prior to sending it to the fire department. The fire department returned it on day 10. They got it that day, they returned it that day, I have still yet to see a response, but I know that they've approved it. So I would hope that that's the end of my water distribution issue. Secondly, I'd like to move on to the electrician. Well, can I stop for a minute? And I would ask that you play the video that I sent in, so I can explain what you're looking at as it relates to what John Julie had asked about my electric service. Can someone play that video, please?
Tom? He's doing it.
Can you hear me, all the video's playing?
Yes.
You'll notice on the telephone poles is red wires.
Wait a minute, Steve, the video is not yet playing.
Okay, but look for the red wires on the telephone pole, and look for the transformer pads with a screwed-in piece of plywood. You'll, you'll see that it's been put in, and we'll keep talking about that. My street members, my loam and seeding of the shoulders, loam and seeding of West Falmouth Highway, there's a wire curled up on the pole, there's an invoice from Clover, 3,800, exactly what I had put on my estimate, there's a, there's a wire on the pole. My Clover check, that's the EverSource-approved installer, John Lynn Harris, there's the wire again. That's the transformer pad, wire in that hole, there's the 4,075 that I put on my estimate to, for a bond I asked for two weeks ago, and this picture is, is an invoice of $500 for the bounds, there are my concrete bounds, you'll see survey stakes at every location with a bound next to it. That's lock corners four, lock corner three and four, lock corner two and three, lock corner one and two, lock corner one. This is Peter McConney saying, "No problems with the water." Steve Rafferty, "No problems with the water." There's my paid receipts for the hydrant. Now, I'd like to talk about the electricity. There's, there's my original request for the bond amount. And the reason why that original request was for $19,725. This bond request went in on April 6th. I told Tom that between the time I get heard and they set the bond, I'm going to have done some work. And I'm going to notify you of the work that I've done, and I have. And I'm going to subtract that from the amount of my request. The reason why I sent paychecks for $4,075 to my electrical guy, the $3,800 to Clover, because that's exactly what I had listed for amounts on the work that I needed to do to complete the project. So now that they've completed it, I've deducted that amount. I didn't inflate the dollars, I didn't understate them. I asked those guys, "What's it going to cost?" They gave me a price. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the electrical because that $47,000 bond amount that Tom has put together with the engineering department includes approximately $17,000 for the electrical work. So when I applied for electric service on the hill, I had to submit a plan. I submitted it to Eversource. Eversource gave me a work order number. And they drew a plan, I paid for the plan. I've installed all the conduits. So the original quote that I got from John Lynn Harris was somewhere around $17,000. He completed most of the work, he put the conduits in, had it inspected. So I reduced that $16,000 and changed by the $12,000 that I gave him until he pulled the wire. He recently pulled the wire, $4,075. So I've reduced my bond amount by $4,075. In anticipation of not getting, in anticipation of the question coming up this evening, I asked Eversource, "I'm trying to set my bond amount. I need an email to lay out the next step and who's responsible for any charges." I sent this email to Tom Bott at 4:00 today because Tom sent me his information at 3:55. I have six items on here. The last item says, "There's no other cost required by Eversource." I don't need to do anything. I'm done with the electricity. If I drop dead tonight and the customer, the people on the hill need power, they're going to have to go to Eversource. They're the ones that, that, that the transformer, they're the ones that live in the lines. If the, if the town was wanting to step in and say, "We're going to take over for Hadad," they're going to say, "Well, you're going to have to wait because he's all done with he's doing. You're going to have to wait for us to power up the lines." John, you know this. You know that that's how, that's the process. So there is no bond amount required because I can't pay Eversource to do anymore. I've paid every penny. And if, if the, Tom had taken the time and truly wanted to understand the process.
Steve, Steve, Steve.
Yep.
Please stop with the personality. I understand you're angry.
Thank you, thank you. So where I'm sitting, I'm done with the electrical component of it. I've done everything they've asked me to do. So now, and by the way, I called Scott Sluta today, the town engineer. I spoke to him about 3:30. And what Scott said to me, and it's, it's in your bullets, and I'll read it because you have the same copy. "We don't typically provide estimates for completion of these utilities since there are no Mast dot numbers and plans are usually not provided. So there isn't any means for us to come up with the numbers. We typically take the estimates at face value. Well, my estimate's zero. And I asked you to take it at face value." That's what, so that's as far as the electric goes. So now I would like to talk about the bounds. As you saw on my video, I have all the bounds. I have the survey, but the lots all been stayed. I have to dig 22 two-foot holes, or what my engineer does. I'm carrying a $3,500 number to get that done. I've already paid for the bounds. I will dig the holes, the 22 holes, so that dollar amount. So my $3,500 to ask my engineer, who I've given him thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars over the years to set those bounds, those bounds are being set and they're going to be set immediately. So as far as I'm concerned, the last issue is the paving. And I think as most of you know in the room, I can pave the driveway tomorrow. There's nothing preventing me from paving the driveway. It's just not good practice. Only an idiot would pave the driveway and then have four houses being built. And then what happens is every time the excavator gets off the trailer, they're going to put the rubber mats out and then, and then there's issues and it's just, it's calamity. But that's my discretion. That's my discretion. I can be a jerk and just pave it and tell all the builders, "Hey, I need $5,000 deposit because if you mess up the driveway, I'm going to have to repair it. So make sure you put the rubber mats down." Me making the decision to wait to put the second course down until the majority of the homes are built and most of the homes are built, I shouldn't be punished for that. I shouldn't have some of this exorbitant paving dollars. I think as most people in the room know, my family owns a paving company. So let me address that. I originally sent a quote from Darren McDonald, no relation. And I said, "You know what? I know how this is going to go. I, I, I better get one from my brother." I was going to send one from my brother's company. But I didn't want to say, "Well, that's your brother's company, that's why it's a low." So I had Clover, the competition. In fact, Clover ended up being less money than my brother's company. So I take exception to the fact that I don't need bond dollars set aside so that I pave a driveway for the four buyers on that hill. One of the buyers is my electrician's son. One of the buyers is Mark Sullivan, the ex-fire chief in town. The other buyer is someone I used to see at Mass General Hospital on a regular basis. I see his father every day at Dunkin' Donuts. These are people that are important people in my life. I don't need $30,000, I don't need a dollar to incentivize me to finish the job. I've done an outstanding job out there and I hope that everybody recognizes that. And the reality is, and I spoke with the town, I spoke with the police department, I spoke with the building commissioner, there hasn't been one complaint. And I think all of you know, it's in West Falmouth. If there was issues, I would hit everybody in West Falmouth, everybody. Ed Hadad is my neighbor to lots. He drives by almost every day. Not one, no relation to me, by the way. Not one where he stopped once and said, "I'm doing a great job." Having said all that, I am asking the board to accept my numbers as legitimate, realistic numbers to set a bond amount so I can convey the lots to the four families that are waiting to get the covenant released so they can start building their homes. I respect the process. I've done everything I possibly could to do the best job I possibly could. Somehow this went awry and I can't, you know, I, I don't know what to say. All I can tell you is I've done a lot of projects in town. I've never had a problem with anybody with no boards. And I don't anticipate a problem here. And again, if the, it seems to me the paving's a big issue now, which should be the simplest issue for bad families in the paving business, I can simply pave the driveway tomorrow. And I want you to recognize that, I wouldn't do that, doesn't make any sense. So I'm asking you to please, please, please accept my bond amount, accept the changes that I didn't request. I had already ordered all the pipe. I had already ordered all the pipe. You know the difference in cost is for water main up the road and the water main at the bottom of the road? About $15,000. I'm into this project for over $800,000. So $15,000, this wasn't about putting a main to save a few bucks.
Steve, can I ask the board now if they have any questions of you? I think you've gone over all of the salient points that you wanted to make, is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Does anybody on the board have questions of Steve at this point?
I have two questions.
John.
Uh, Steve, uh, did you present, uh, the board with, uh, the electric plan that was approved by Eversource? Have we seen that?
No.
Is that, is that something you could do?
It's, it's already been signed off and completed, uh, I guess like whatever the Eversource sent me.
It was signed off by Eversource?
Yes, it's already been inspected. I have, I have Paul O'Connor from the, the, Paul O'Connor is the, uh, construction inspector conduit group.
Yep, I know Paul.
So, and I have an email here from the, from, from the Eversource guy saying that Paul's already inspected. They already did the hypos test. I have the results of the hypos test. I had, it's, it's all done and inspected.
Okay, at some point I would like to see that plan, the board to see the plan. But second question I have is, uh, did you, were you required to post a bond with Eversource?
No, I, I pay, I just pay, whatever they sent me, I paid them money.
Well, they usually require a bond and then they give you a certain amount of that back as you start using the electricity for the first three years. They didn't require that bond?
Uh, whatever they asked of me, I paid them. So I don't recall it being referred as, as a bond amount. I, uh, they were more concerned about the, um, the easements.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions? Go ahead, John.
Well, the reason I'm asking is to see a plan. I only see one handhold out there. Is that one handhold going to handle all four lots?
Yes. It's primary line going up to the handhold, it's not secondary.
Okay, well, again, at some point it'd be nice to see the plan, that's all.
Yep, that was a good question, John. That's, that, that was spot, spot on, I, I get that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, Paul. Turn your microphone on, Paul.
The basic concern you have is the amount of the bond, is that correct?
Ye- uh, yes.
So all of what you've talked about is basically leading to you think the bond is too high and it should be lower. All the other stuff has been taken care of, as I understand it, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, Charlotte.
Um, two things. First of all, I, I drive by there all the time. I live in North Falmouth and that's the way I get downtown. It's a really handsome design, I've admired it as it went in. I want to ask, what's the dollar difference between what, uh, you would like to see as the bond and what the, what the town appears to be asking?
Well, I think that, I, I think that the, the town is asking for $47,000 and I suggested a bond amount of $12,500 because the only things that I need to do left, as far as I'm concerned, is put in the bounds, which I've already purchased, has already been surveyed, and put a top coat on the driveway. So it's, it's a difference of about $22,000 and change.
This is an assurance from somebody who lives here and has this whole lively, but here, is that right?
Myself, yes.
Right.
And the reality is the town's not going to step in and pave that road. They're not going to step in and, and, and have the bond set. That's never going to happen. It's never going to happen. I'm sitting in subdivision now that the bounds are supposed to be set and no one's ever put them in. You know, I'm going to put them in, the bounds are there, it's already stayed. Fortunately, they're 400-foot lots so that I can put, put them in without having them be disturbed.
Anyone else have any questions of Steve? Okay, um, I think the board now needs to discuss what we've heard from Tom and Steve and the direction that we want to go. Are you all in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Tom?
Uh, can we take care of the first point that the board doesn't feel that there needs to be a hearing?
That's what we're going to do.
Okay.
I've got the bullet list right in front of me, okay? So the first thing we have to decide is do the changes require a hearing because both a definitive plan and a special permit were issued. And you heard all of that before you had it on your screen. Does anybody want me to go through the whole thing and refresh you on that?
No.
No.
Okay, so does the board believe that it requires a new hearing?
No.
No.
I don't think so.
No.
If we could roll call, vote please, just to keep.
Okay, fine.
Gary?
I'm sorry?
I think we're out of here. What do you mean, the roll call vote?
Well, I can see who it is, but I better, I should mention it. You say no. John, you say no.
Correct.
You say no. Bob, you say no, I believe.
Yeah, I say no.
And Charlotte, you said no.
Right, and I said no.
Oh, Pam, I don't see you, your picture isn't there. So I didn't know. Um, and I say no. Okay, so the, the board is seven to zero, no. Okay?
Just for the record, that is sort of standard procedure for these Zoom meetings for everybody who's had a meeting so they know who voted. Uh, they just call the roll and do that, just for record purposes.
Okay. Okay, and then the next question on there is the subdivision work complete? Except for the paving, my understanding is that the subdivision work is complete. Is that what everybody else heard?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
Paving and the, and some of the bounds.
Yes, well, the bounds have to be set. They're on property, they're on the property, they have to be set. The paving actually, yeah, okay. Should the main and hydrant be installed prior to lot release? The water superintendent has confirmed that they will install the hydrant at the new location if the planning board approves the new location after Mass DOT issues their permit for work within West Falmouth Highway. The developer has to cover the cost of the police detail.
Pat, can I talk for that for one second, please?
Yes. Thank you, Steve.
The, the, the town, the town regs suggest, require that fire hydrants are not to be more than 500 feet apart. Presumably, if you had one at 500 feet and the next house, you had a house, it would be less than 500 feet to the hydrant. So Mel Trot said to me, "As long as the houses are not more than 500 feet from the hydrant, we're okay." Well, currently today, there's a hydrant south of my subdivision, 147 feet from the entrance to my driveway. I've, I've sent the, the board numerous material, numerous material. But one of them is from the GIS. My houses are going to be 350 to 420 feet away from the existing hydrant, from the existing hydrant. When you talk of, terms, words have meanings. When you talk about lot release, if you don't release the lots, my buyers cannot buy them. If they can't buy them, they can't build. Should the board feel that the hydrant is 147 feet to the south of me is not sufficient to, in the case of fire, I think something would be more appropriate would be, well, we wouldn't have an occupancy permit unless the hydrant's installed and up and running. Because I'm willing to bet that the town in the state, given a nine or 10-month buildup, because none of the homes have started yet, that within 10 months, I'm pretty certain that a hydrant will be up and running on the hill. And I guess we could revisit it, should someone finish their house in less than 10 months and this hydrant is still not there. There is nothing for me to do. I've already paid for the hydrant. The DOT's already requested a permit to work on the shoulder. So I, I would ask that if you felt that you needed to tie the, uh, the hydrant into some safety or the fire department feels that way, then I would tie it into an occupancy permit versus a lot release and a building permit.
Okay, we have discussion from the board on this point, please.
If I understood what, what Tom is saying is that the town's going to install the hydrant. The hydrant's already been delivered to the town.
Right.
Just, just waiting for the state to approve it. I have no concerns about the hydrant being at that location or that it's going to be installed. I wouldn't want to hold up any building permit or occupancy permit based on those facts.
Tom?
So in our conversation on Friday afternoon with Mr. Hadad, he told me about, here's how the water department does things. So whenever anybody tells me anything, I confirm it and I confirm it in print. So everything that we've talked about from the water department, fire department, engineering is in print.
from the water department, fire department, engineering is in print and it's been in the report. So when Steve told me, well, this is what the fire, what the water department does, I said, well, uh sent Steve Rafferty an email right away and said, so is this how things work? I didn't hear from him on Monday. Uh I didn't hear from him on today, so I called him today and he sent me back a notification that as of four twenty eight, that's what's going to happen and the water department will put those things in. The only out of pocket for developer at this point is the police detail to make sure that when they're putting the main in on uh West Falmouth Highway that that's covered. So the issue of whether the subdivision is complete and the water main is in, I have the assurance in writing from water superintendent that is the case. And this is exactly how I work all the time. I don't take somebody said, somebody said, I want it verified and I want it in print and I want to make sure everybody's on the same page. Which is why as of four twenty eight, we got the information. So the main is fine at this point. If the board's fine with moving the location and based on the discussions we've had about the two thousand fifteen location was at the top of the hill, the two thousand twenty location was at the bottom of the hill. The board wants to move it, that's fine. Everybody's fine with that and that seems to make the most sense. So you're not going to hold anything up there. But all those things that we do, we verify and they're not about who, it's about what. It's always about the regulations. It's about the inspection and it's about the verification. So in the case of the electrical, if someone tells me the electrical is in, the first thing I did when I got the email from Mr. Haddad that says the electrical is in, I'm like, okay, I'll ask engineering to go out and inspect it. So my recommendation would be when the board sets a bond, that they set a bond for that amount and they say, well, if the if the electrical is in per the engineering's then get rid of that. But the dollars and cents on the bond are not about who's doing it. It's about protecting the town and making sure that those costs are covered because if we have to do it, regardless of who this person is, these are the regulations and these are how we do those sort of things and the engineering division sets that bond amount. The board has waived the bond amount before. We've seen it with uh Kik Estate. The board sent a lower bond for that. We've seen it with John Druley subdivision. Now, keep in mind, John Druley is someone who we've seen before, someone who's worked in town before and he has a bond for his subdivision sufficient to cover those costs. So this is nothing about who, it's about what. What are the regulations? How do we verify those things? And this is the process that we do. If the engineering division says, yeah, the electrical's in, it's fine to go, then we reduce that amount from the bond. But as far as those costs, those costs are prevailing wage and that's what the process has always been making sure those those costs are covered in the event that the town has that work. And to give them all the town does.
Jim?
My my con.
I have a question. I have, I would recall that Tom submitted three or four months ago, a long list of inspections that he was going to have the engineering department do on subdivisions and we turned it down. I we we voted not to do it and now I think he's implementing it whether we voted to it or not. This is a tremendous amount of unnecessary red tape and I'd like Tom to go back and review and bring back to us what our vote was when he presented all those inspections. Well, I my recollection is we voted against it.
John?
If I may. As as I started to say earlier, the reason I support the fire hydrant being where it is that was proposed to be at the bottom of the hill is because Tom reported earlier in the meeting that Steve Rafferty said that it was okay and that the fire hydrant had already been delivered to the town water department and the town of Falmouth is now responsible for installing that hydrant, not the applicant. So that's why I I say I have no problem with it being at the bottom of the hill and and no money for a bond should be included for that hydrant because it's already all set for the town to install.
Correct.
Tom, you wanted to say something?
Yes, there are five inspections required under the subdivision regulations. Only five, because we haven't changed anything. Those five inspections uh are listed in the regulations and and frankly, none of them have been done uh because it's a private driveway, not a road and the planning, this uh engineering division doesn't inspect a road. The drainage, the the drainage is the responsibility of Mass Dot and Mr. Haddad provided me with information that Mass Dot had approved the drain. Uh inspections of gravel, fine grading, those things. None of these inspections have been done because they're basically either Mass Dot's requirement or they weren't building a road, they were building a drive. So essentially, the only inspections that have been done by the engineering division have gone out there and looked at pavement and looked at the bounds and said, here's the things that haven't been done. Here's the cost that we have. So there have been no extraordinary number of inspections. In fact, there's been less inspections than typically would be because the develop the uh decision of the planning board in two thousand fifteen said, this will be inspected by the planning board or by the engineering. So when Mr. Haddad, as I understand from talking to the engineering division, came out and said, would you inspect my driveway? The engineering division says we don't inspect private driveways. Now, the engineering division did have a copy of the decision because we don't hold pre-construction conferences, as I recommended before, to make sure everybody's on the same page as what we had to do. But we have free uh if we have these inspections, this this meeting before we start, everybody knows what their responsibilities are. Everybody knows what's supposed to be done. And if anybody wants to change anything, you bring it up at that point, not at the end of the process, at the beginning of the process. So this has suffered from a few different issues, but one of them is that it's very unusual that it's a private driveway. Uh and uh we're at the point right now where the work's been done. We confirm the work that's been done and we know what the bond amount is going to be uh based on those confirmations of inspection. So right now, they've inspected the road to see that, yeah, the pavement's not done. This is what it costs for pavement. We don't know anything about the electrical. We take the electrical uh base value. And here's the cost to install the bounds uh because that's what uh the uh Mass Highway has a number for in their weighted average.
So I would I would like to add, please, for the record, because this is back to my last project. Scott Schuler told you, Tom, and I know that he did, that I went in there in August, the same day I saw Rafferty and said, what do we want to do about my inspection? So please don't characterize it that I was reluctant to have inspections because I specifically asked Scott. And I am the owner of King Pine Hills. It requires me to be inspected and he said to me the same thing he told you. It's a driveway. We don't have the standards to inspect driveway. So I just want the board to know. I asked for the inspections. I asked the water superintendent, what do you want me to put in for the water? And I checked with the fire department, what do you want me to do with the hydrant? I am certainly capable of completing the project with pavement.
So the bottom line appears to be, oh, you wanted to say something, Charlotte?
Just let's get on with the decisions that we need to make. I can see people have different positions, but they don't really need to be aired in order for us to do what we need to do for this project to go forward. So if you could reframe, restate the question in front of us and we could make a decision.
Okay, we've already decided that we do not have to call another hearing. Uh the subdivision work has been mostly complete. What is still outstanding is the final coat of the paving and the setting of the bounds. Am I correct in that? I believe I am. Only those two things need to be done still.
But we haven't actually confirmed the electrical is in.
Okay. But
so.
I I thought it had been in. That's what I thought. John, you saw it too. Is my correct on that, that it is in?
No, that's why I asked for the plan. I I can see that the wires are up the pole to be connected. That's all you.
I see.
And he and he he presented a um a statement from his contractor that said the conduit was in. There I didn't see any statement that said that the wires are in, but he says that they're in and I can see they're up the pole, but that's all I can say.
Okay.
So so excuse me, please. So the 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 hip, the uh hypos test done on the wires. It's a test they do for the wires to make sure that they don't, there's no water penetration. These are all the test results on the wires. Tom Bott received this email. He could have brought it to the meeting tonight and shared it with the board. But this this is proof that all the wires are in and I will I will offer this if it's okay with the board. I would hope that you would approve my bond amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars for the pavement and the bond. And I will and I will bring whatever documentation beyond what I have here today from Eversource stating that all the wires are in. I think if John, if you read through these emails, you would know that, but I I I appreciate where you're sitting and uh I could do that. I I I just have people that are looking to close, there's mortgage commitments, it's 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 very time sensitive. And I truly, truly appreciate everybody's effort, including Tom Bott. He hasn't been around a lot and I know this was a challenge for him because of it's a driveway, not a road, so. But it's very personal to me, as you can all imagine.
Okay, well, it seems to me, and please, I need input on this. As I've told Tom, my brain has started to spin sometimes with this, but it appears that we would need a motion that lots one, two, three, and four of the King Pine Hill subdivision be released upon the acceptance of surety and amount of and Steve wants it to be twelve thousand seven fifty, I think you said. Um with the cost of police detail for water main and hydrant installation covered by the developer, but it also appears to me that we should put into that decision that the bond is to cover electrical inspection. Um and if that, if you provide that to Tom and that can be subtracted from it, Steve, that's okay if he agrees that it's been inspected and it's fine. The final pavement coating and the setting of the bounds, is that correct? Is my understanding correct or am I missing something here?
Well, I I I think that uh it it was close uh in that the app, the developer is required to put the conduits in and run the wires so that you have an open end wire on both ends of the system. Eversource is responsible for setting the transformer on the user end and then they attach the wire to the primary on the pole. My video shows the wires curled up at the top of the conduit being ready to attach to the pole. But John doesn't have X-ray vision, so he can't see the handhold, which I'll gladly pull the lugs off tomorrow and show the wire.
But you're 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 correct. I don't I don't argue about this. You're correct, but they don't do it for free.
Correct.
That's why that's why I asked you if you had posted a bond with them. They use that bond money to to make those connections. And it doesn't sound like you've given them any money. I don't want to debate it uh over and over again, but that's why I asked the question.
Mary?
John, what in your experience is the bond amount?
It it depends on every every development is different. There is no set amount.
Okay.
And that's why I asked the question. I'm not trying to be be misleading or or be combative or anything. Our 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 job is to protect the as part of our job here. And and this would not have nearly as much consternation if we had approved this as a subdivision with a subdivision road instead of a driveway. We tried to be helpful to the applicant and I for one will never approve a driveway for a subdivision again.
I know I really didn't like this either when we first did the approval, but.
I I would echo those same comments.
Okay.
As a board, we need to move forward here.
Yes, we do. So that's why I'm asking.
So John,
to move forward.
Wh- what specifically, I I've paid everything to Eversource. They want, what specific documentation would you like for me to get so that I can satisfy yours and the board's concern with respect to the work that's been done in the wires? Because it's it's I have no problem getting whatever it is you want because it's been done.
I asked it, you said if you didn't post a bond, you had to have paid them money.
Yes, I did.
Okay, do you know the amount?
No, I don't. I was trying to flip through my, I was trying to flip through my records here very quickly while you were asking.
So John, you would think that in in lieu of a bond, the money he paid covered.
That's that's how they that's how they work. They have a contract. He has he has a contract number. It was on the bill from the electrician. It's a project number and the developer gives a deposit. Eversource uses that money to make the connection and when the connections are made over the next three years, the electricity gets used in that by the homeowners of the development period gets paid back to the original developer. They repay the bond. They usually get back about fifty percent of your money over a three year period.
So this is.
That's how it works.
Since Steve did not post a bond, but he paid money, we probably do not have to be concerned with this?
If he paid money, it probably was for a bond.
I definitely, I definitely paid the money. I, everything's completed and signed off.
I don't want to put words into his mouth, but I'm sure that's what happened.
Yeah, I understand that. All right, but how does the board want to move on this? I mean, we have a a potential motion at the bottom of that bullet points list. But I'm also saying that I think it needs to have a little bit more detail in that because it only covers, it it has a surety in the amount of X dollars. And it says that the the cost of a police detail for the water main and hydrant installation.
I've called the fire, I called the police department today to arrange for detail when the time comes in. They have, I've had details before.
But Steve, that's not my point because the reason that the bond is there and I think it should be stated, I mean, the surety bond, whatever you want to call it. I think it should be stated that the reasons that it's in there is that we are looking for the final pavement and we are looking for the setting of the bounds.
I also, Pat?
Yes.
I also think, I also think seeing the uh bill, a pay bill from Eversource is important.
Okay.
Whatever was paid to them for whatever it was, I think I think John is right in saying that's an important element in this.
But then we had, to put that in there, that's part of the surety amount. We don't know what we're looking at. Tom?
If if I could recommend, uh I'll have engineering out to uh give us uh uh the uh uh an evaluation of the electrical being inspected. It'd be great if Mr. Haddad would provide that electrical plan. But I would suggest at this point that uh the board set the bond amount strictly for the paving and the bounds under the assumption that the electrical is fine. So if the board was to make a motion to set the bond at thirty one thousand one hundred and fifty five, uh hopefully, everything is fine, as Mr. Haddad has pointed out with the electrical. He can post his bond and then uh get his closings done. But absent any information, any documentation, you're sort of out there and in just sort of making up numbers.
That's 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 all that's all I asked for.
We're confirming, we're confirming that thirty one one five five is a bond amount. We know for work it hasn't been done. Uh and it covers the town and we take Mr., uh we we assume that things are fine with the electrical, although we don't really know that.
That's not, that's that's not what I asked for though, Tom, and you know.
That's the twelve thousand nine hundred and.
That's that's exactly right. And it's very unfair. I I'm being punished for waiting to pave the driveway. That's a benefit to the homeowners. That's exactly what's happening here. John Druley, you know that. I can pave that driveway tomorrow. I'm being punished for waiting to pave the driveway.
Hang on, Steve. What I'm coming up with, I'm um adding thirty five hundred dollars for BSS Designs estimate and I am adding eight thousand nine hundred and fifty for Clover's estimate. And I come up, I come up with twelve thousand four hundred and fifty.
Correct.
From those quotes.
Tom just said thirty one thousand.
Yeah, where, what is that based on, Tom, please?
That's based on engineering's estimate. Keep in mind that our estimates, our bond amount is that protection to the town and the protection to the property owners that the work will be completed. And if that work has to be completed by the town, the town has to bid that and pay a prevailing wage. That's why the numbers are different from what the private sector pays. It's not about this guy gave me a great deal, this guy did that. We have no great deals as the town. We have to go through procurement. We have to pay prevailing wage if that's what we have to do. And that's what the basis of those numbers are based on. Mass highways, weighted averages for materials uh by unit cost.
Madam Taylor? That was my question earlier. Does anyone have a recollection of the town ever having to do this?
That was my question earlier. Does anyone have a recollection of the town ever having to do this? And I thought the answer was no. In my years in the board, I have not had, the nine years I've served, I don't recall this happening. I asked Tom if he knew about one. He does not know. Pat, do you recall it happening?
And I told you, I, I don't. I mean, we have had to, we have had to not release a covenant. We've had to not release a bond, even though the owner has agreed to it, because the work has not, or has desired it, because the work has not been completed.
I think Bob has a question.
This is considered, this is a private driveway, right?
Yes.
Is the town responsible for paving a private driveway if it doesn't get paved?
No.
So, how can you have a bond for something that the town would never do?
That was my point.
Well, if I may. The subdivision's decision says there'll be a private driveway put in in lieu of the road. So it's part of the subdivision decision that that has to be put in. So when we're releasing the lots, when we're releasing that, we have to have a bond to make sure that the conditions of the subdivision are complete. Now, just one other point, and I don't want to sound too dramatic here. Well, while we've never called a bond for anything, have we ever been in the circumstance in the history of our lives where we've had such economic uncertainty in the future?
All the more reason to help me out here, move this project along. I couldn't agree more, Tom.
So as soon as the board sets a bond, and Mr. Headed delivers that bond, the lots will be released.
Was it the original decision? Was it the original decision for a gravel driveway?
No, I don't believe so.
I don't think it ever was, Bob.
Okay, for some reason I thought it was.
No, because it's a steep slope, and I think we would not have done that because it'd wash.
Okay. Bob, I think you're correct. Originally, the preliminary plan showed a gravel driveway, but the board wanted a paved driveway. You're absolutely correct.
Yeah, because when you've got a slope like that, it washes.
Yeah, I would support, I would support a bond amount of $15,000.
I would too.
I would too. I would too.
Paul? Paul? You gotta turn your speaker on. No, Paul, yeah, okay.
I support it with the concurrence of Tom Botts.
So we've got, we've got Jim, Pam, John, Bob, Charlotte, and I think 15,000 is okay too. And you think it's okay, Paul, with a concurrence of Tom?
Yes.
So it sounds like we can put 15K in there. And so then it's going to read that the motion would be, does anybody have this in front of them?
Yeah.
Know what I'm talking about? Okay, the motion would be that lots one, two, three, four of the King Hill, King Pine Hill subdivision be released upon the acceptance of surety in the amount of 15,000 with the cost of police detail for water main and hydrant installation covered by the developer, and completion of the final coat, paving coat, and the setting of the bounds. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we should have the number of bounds. I think it was 22 bounds.
And the setting of 22 bounds. Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, moved by John, seconded by John. Any further discussion on this? And Tom, do you have the wording down?
I do.
Okay. All right, we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Paul Dryer.
Dryer says yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Bob?
Aye.
Charlotte?
Yes.
Aye. So it's.
Thank you. Point of, just point of clarification. So I'm putting up $15,000. I'm gonna pave the driveway, I'm gonna put all the bonds in, I'm gonna pay for a police detail when they install the water main. That's the, that's the entire obligation that I am to be doing in order to receive my $15,000 back. Is that correct?
Yes, and Steve, you presented it that you would not put on the final coat until.
I will not put on the final coat for, until at least three of the four homes are built.
Okay, is that satisfactory with the board? Remember that we have partially released bonds before too.
I just don't want someone who might decide not to build be an inconvenience for the other neighbors. I know most of the people, I believe at least three of the four will be starting immediately, so I'm confident in that, that that's the case, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And John, I will take care of the electric stuff, so you're feeling better about it, but I appreciate your understanding of the process.
Yeah, I'd like to see a copy of the plan and.
Yep, I will get that to you.
And Tom?
Yeah, my question for Mr. Headed is, what sort of bond are you going to be posting?
I'm gonna come in and write you a check to the town.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
No, thank you, everybody. I truly appreciate your efforts in having these hearings, because when this all's over, we have a lot of people that want to get back to work, so I appreciate your efforts. I truly mean that. And I also appreciate Tom's efforts. It's been tough, but I appreciate his efforts.
All right, so one more thing, in a couple, in a couple minutes when we're done with this, I'm gonna send you the bond release form. Fill out the lots and the descriptions in it, and bring that back with the check, okay?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be to you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. Next on our agenda is the determination of access policy, and what you have in your packet is in essence what we had seen before. Now, Bob, you wanted to see something, the major objection that we all had is to be able to put something together that didn't require every road to look like a city road, because we've got a lot of country lanes. And you prefer to see something required of not greater than a 30-foot width in certain instances. I believe that is correct.
Yeah, I think each individual neighborhood is gonna kind of dictate that, because I think some of these are developed to the point where you couldn't actually put in a wider road layout.
Right.
So if I may, on the screen, I've got the one-page determination of access policy. Standards for improvement include at least a 24-foot wide right-of-way. As we had the discussion at the end of Crowell Road, in some sections, we had 30-foot of wideway available, others 20. And as we talked with the engineering division before, they seem to feel that 10-foot wide lanes were a minimum amount. The narrowest I've been able to find in any of our regulations are 18 feet, but that was a one-way road with parking lane on it. So the right-of-way is that area that we put the road and the drainage and utilities and things like that in. So 24-foot is about as trim as you can get it down to and still have two passable lanes, frankly.
Okay. Is that more in line, Bob, with what you were hoping for?
Uh, yeah.
Pat?
Yes, Pam?
Pam, excuse me, Pam.
No, Charlotte.
Charlotte, okay.
To, to Pat. Yes, we have wanted it to be able to be possible for Falmouth to still have country-looking roads. The one, and this gets, it's almost there, but I'd like to see some language on it that maybe it would be Q, that there's a possibility of flexibility for, at the planning board's discretion.
I agree with that, Charlotte.
I believe if you read the article, that's exactly what it says in the last sentence.
Yeah.
Where?
Just go to the last sentence of this thing that Tom gave us, and it said, however, that whatever reasonably can be done by the planning board can have approval.
Yeah, conditions may be waived by the planning board.
It's already there.
Why am I not seeing that too?
It's after the bullets.
Yeah.
Draft include.
I don't see it there.
I don't see it on my copy.
I don't see it either.
I think it's on the next page.
Well, I would like to see it. What I've got is a Falmouth draft determination of access policy with points A through P, followed by standards for improvement with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven bullets, and that's it. And now one of them says.
You have.
These can be modified at the discretion of the planning board.
You have this page? That I have?
It was in the stuff that Tom Botts sent me.
I can go ahead and have that page.
That has the pictures of Woodruff Lane?
I got that, Bob, but that's not part of what.
Yes.
But it's.
And I went back looking for that, wishing that it had been included in what we're apparently going to approve, which is the determination of access policy, but it's not. It's just in the beginning pieces.
So did I understand you to say you like it specifically on this one pager, because it was included in the memo, and it may not have just made the cut and paste? That that's specific language from the 2007 policy that said, "Conditions may be waived by the planning board."
Right.
That didn't make it from here, from the sort of forward, onto the actual policy.
But I think, Charlotte, with your concurrence, that may be waived by the planning board, that invites an awful lot of pressure on us for any waiving.
Well, we'll just have to stay strong.
I think it's.
Or we could condition it dependent upon the conditions of the neighborhood.
No, why do that?
Okay.
That simple sentence. But just be sure that it's included in the draft access policy, so when we. It's clear.
Okay.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So one of the great things about a policy is the board's got carte blanche to waive those things. Where we have zoning, you've got to comply with zoning or go to the ZBA to waive it. Where we have a subdivision regulation, the board can waive a regulation if there's some compelling public purpose. But in the case of a policy, sort of the third layer down of how we operate, it's the board's role to set the policy, and it's the board's ability to waive their policy. Why do we have these discussions in a public meeting?
Yes, that's all true. So in other words, you're saying, well, it goes without saying. But on the other hand, there's no harm in actually saying. I would like to see it included there as point Q.
Oh, point Q or the, or the bullet? Under the bullet?
No, those are the standards.
Ah, okay. It should be Q, I mean, right after the P.
Yep.
Okay, point Q, "Conditions may be waived by the planning board."
Yep.
Okay. Okay, then.
I'd like to add something to that, rather than just can be waived, it should be a condition under which we would waive it, such as certain geological features or something, or something that just, so somebody can't come in and say, hey, you can waive this, and I'd like you to waive this. I'd like, I'd like us to operate under some sort of criteria for when we would waive something, not just.
That's what I was, yeah, that's what I was trying to get at. Right.
So.
Otherwise, we'll be accused of being capricious and arbitrary.
Right.
Yeah.
So we want to put a few standards with that.
Yeah, something.
You know, one, one thing might be if there was an ancient tree, for example, that was very healthy, and we had to go around that tree by a small amount for not that, you know, long a duration of of length that we would be able to do that. Because once we, once we say, oh, we'll wait, waive that, I mean, Bob is right. It's, we need to have some standards. So I would think, again, if there was a tree and it narrowed the passageway to 22 feet or 23 feet, that would be okay. But I think, I think we have to have some reason for.
Jim, you had a, you had a comment.
I agree with Pam. How about something like the character of the neighborhood?
Well, that's what I, that's what I was trying to get at when I said that.
It could cover the tree, it could cover a lot of things, and that's really what's important. I don't want to see these great big 50-foot subdivision roads going into a quiet little neighborhood. I've seen towns that have done it, and they look silly. I think we have to be careful here.
So we want to look at, we have other bylaws where it says something about the character of the neighborhood, which would make.
Well, I'm not sure a tree fits into the character of the neighborhood. I mean, it could, but it might not.
The neighborhood has a lot of trees.
Charlotte?
True.
One of the common problems in drafting any kind of language is that once you start specifying things like a tree or this really good-looking rock or whatever, and later it can be said, if they had really wanted to allow you to allow for the rock, they would have named it. They said tree, they said this, they said that, but they didn't say tree. You want to allow the board the flexibility. The whole point in adding this is so that the board's judgment can modify it if the board chooses to. And any language that you add in addition to it reduces the flexibility of the board to do exactly that. Jim's suggestion, character of the neighborhood, is about as as tied down as you'd ever want a flexibility provision to be.
Right.
I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that we said a tree. I was just suggesting that as an example.
Oh, I'm suggesting that you should condition your own flexibility, but.
That's fine. No, no, no. I, I wasn't, I was just using that as an example for why I might consider voting to change that 24 feet. But I wasn't saying that we should say as if a tree were lurking within that 20.
You're a tree hugger. Good.
I love trees, yes.
So how about if we put something like, "Conditions may be waived by the planning, by the planning board so as to preserve the, the character of the neighborhood?"
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree. So I have in my text, "Conditions may be waived by the planning board based on the character of the neighborhood." Is that what I heard?
Well, yes, but no. It's so as to preserve the character of the neighborhood.
But.
Yeah, Paul?
I think I'd like to catch that a little differently and say, consideration will be given. Not that you're automatically gonna change it, but consideration may be given to the character of the neighborhood and so forth. It gives a little bit of flexibility.
Okay, how do you all like that? Consideration may be given.
Well, why would you give it to one neighborhood, but then you may not give it to another neighborhood?
That's why you want to consider it.
I think you don't want to condition your own flexibility. You're never.
Really, I think I liked it the way it was.
Yeah, I do too.
I understand the word waiver.
Yeah.
Can I have that from the top again, please?
Okay, "Conditions may be waived by the planning board so as to preserve the character of the neighborhood."
I think that's good.
That's what I wrote down.
Or we can, we could just just take out "so as," so it's waived by the planning board to preserve the character of the neighborhood.
Either way, I think it's fine.
Okay, so we're good with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So. We have street acceptance recommendation of Williams Road.
May I get just a motion to adopt that whole policy?
So move.
Oh, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, and roll call, favor, Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Charlotte?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Bob?
Aye.
And myself.
Daddy, yes.
Always has been.
Such a wise guy.
Sounds more compliment.
So acceptance, to recommend acceptance of William Road.
May I, Madam Chair?
Yes, Tom?
So previously, when the board talked about Williams Road, it is one of those narrow roads. It's only about 24 feet in places. So this is what we previously looked at. This is the locust map for Williams Road. You see in red where the property is located at. This is the street layout that was voted by the board of selectmen. This is the street layout that was voted by the Board of Selectmen, uh, back in March of, uh, 2020. It just seems like the other day, uh, the road layout voted by the selectmen. These are the existing conditions. You'll recognize that car gets in a lot of pictures these days. So this is, uh, Williams Road is we're at the intersection of Quaker Road. Uh, and you can see that there's not a whole lot of width, uh, to the roadway there. So the DPW has in their recommendation said, uh, they will, and I have to read this from here because I don't have, uh, can't see it on the screen. Uh, the DPW will approve the layout of Williams Road, uh, by taking an easement for eminent domain for road purposes for a parcel of land about 1,333 acres, uh, formerly owned by Henry J. Heeler. Inappropriate, about $2,700, some certified free cash under the jurisdiction to make these improvements. There were not any sidewalks proposed for this, uh, and the board had asked, uh, why not if we're building them to subdivision standard? That subdivision standard is essentially those 11-foot travel lanes. And the memo that I had sent you, I can just toggle to this.
David? Dave?
What?
Did you turn on the dryer?
Pam, you might want to mute.
David.
That'll learn that spacebar technique.
So. So these are the standards that are in our subdivision regulations. And as you know, I'm always referring to our subdivision regulations. So this is essentially what they're building out there. Uh, these two, uh, uh, these two, uh, 10-foot wide travel lanes with a foot of Cape Cod berm. Uh, they'll do these sort of improvements underneath it, but to make sure there's sufficient base and, uh, two courses of asphalt on top of it. And they are 22-foot wide, uh, lanes, including the Cape Cod berm. So that's what they're putting in. They're not putting in sidewalks. And we had reached out to the, uh, school department because there's a school behind it to say, would you guys want sidewalks on this road? Uh, presumably there were rooms so people could walk to school from Quaker Road. But there are no sidewalks on Quaker Road. There's very little right-of-way to work with. So the plan here is just to improve the roadway travel-wise, travel width-wise for the road curbing and the drainage, uh, but no sidewalks. There will be some trees that will be cleared in order to put the roadway in. Uh, and if that's the case, if they're in the road right-of-way, there'll be a tree hearing for those held by the tree supervisor. So because this is a road and typically we have street acceptances, we do them because we know what the road is. We approved the subdivision, we inspected it, we know what's in Fates Lane, we know what's in whatever road it happens to be. But in this case, Williams Road predates subdivisions. It's been there forever and ever. So my proposed recommendation of the planning board would be the board supports the acceptance of the road and the subsequent improvements to upgrade the road for residents in the water waste, water treatment plant at the end of the road. Williams Road was created prior to subdivision regulations and there are no inspections by the planning board.
And there is a motion at the back of the package of information.
That I just read.
Yes.
Just read it.
Would somebody like to make that motion or do you want to ask Tom any further questions or have discussion on it?
We'll just make the motion.
Okay, somebody? Oh gee, let's all work together here.
I reckon, I move that the board supports the acceptance of the road and the subsequent improvements to upgrade the road for the residents in the wastewater treatment plant at the end of the road. William Road was created prior to subdivision regulations and there are no inspections by the planning board.
Second.
Any questions? Paul?
I suggest in the first line, you say, "Acceptance of Williams Road," right up front.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Of Williams Road.
Of Williams Road.
Is that okay with the second?
Okay. Thanks, Paul, for that catch. All in favor? Paul?
Aye.
John? Jim?
Aye.
Charlotte?
Aye.
Pam? Bob?
Yes.
I saw Pam move her mouth. She doesn't have her speaker on. Pam, you don't have your sound on.
Take your mute, take your mute off.
How's the laundry go?
Yeah, we want the laundry folded and hunk.
Sorry about that. I just sort of forgot.
You moved your mouth. I saw you say aye, but we need to.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I.
Okay. All right, so we've got that. We have, next on the agenda, future agendas for pending applications. I didn't have the list in my packet, Tom, so.
No, we were working on it up until press time and I'm actually looking for it right now. Bear with me. So when we last talked, we talked about how we can't get all the things done necessarily that are on our plate because we've got, we do meetings where we have to call everyone's name over and over again to vote. Uh, and we were, we're short of staff because Cory is out, uh, currently on, uh, federal leave. So in having a discussion with town council about, well, we'll decide which sort of applications we have, we want to take, uh, they weren't crystal clear on you could pick and choose based on, uh, the quality of the application. But you could pick and choose based upon the complexity of the application. So as it comes along, as we have to look at things, we'll have to determine if we've got the staff in-house to deal with those things. So presently, what we have anticipating on the agenda for May 12th is a site plan review for a detached apartment at 404 Hayway Road that the board, the, the staff is reviewing, uh, the staff being Melinda and Michaela. Uh, pending applications that we don't have quite in yet, well, actually, we have a definitive application for Woods Hole Partners. That's the dome. That's the grandfather there zoning. We have a special permit modification, uh, and a site plan review for 350 Old Meeting House. It's an incomplete application. And they hope to have that information in shortly. Another special permit application for detached apartment on 32 Walker Street. Uh, the application's complete, but they didn't really have that consultation with Rod Palmer beforehand about some building code issues. It is a very unusual application. So while we have an application in, uh, we still need to hear back from Rod on some of them. So it'll be queued up as we get those sort of things sorted out. Other two things that are just, uh, uh, we expect to see next week is, uh, Borrego Solar. We approved their site plan for, uh, the solar, but their access road is on the town property. So they're putting the subdivision plan together to build that access road on the town's property to a subdivision standard. We should see that, uh, next week. And the Barnstable County Fairgrounds is moving forward their, uh, application for large-scale solar PV. I just spoke with them, uh, actually didn't speak with them, I emailed them today. So we know we've got one piece of business coming up for May 12th and we know we have a number of other things in the pipeline. It could be ready as soon as, uh, the end of May. But more likely June based on staffing. Because as I've indicated to you before, uh, I'm going to be taking, uh, family medical leave, uh, beginning, uh, May 19th, uh, to go, uh, attend to my mother in Florida. Uh, I'll be self-isolating for two weeks before then I'll still be working. But our regular meeting in May is May 26th and I won't be here. Uh, Michaela's part-time and Cory's on leave, so I anticipate that I will be asking the board if they would be comfortable having their meeting the first Tuesday of June versus May, uh, 26th, the day after Memorial Day. Because I don't know that we're going to have the staff available to put something together for that.
What's that date in June, Tom?
Uh, I believe it is June 2nd. I'm checking.
June 2nd.
June 2nd. Yes, June 2nd.
Okay.
And we may have some competition from the Historic Commission because that is their typical meeting date. Uh, the Historic Commission, uh, meeting with EDHAD-AD tomorrow on helping the Historic Commission out, get their meeting set up. But as you know, Cory is the principal contact with the Historic. So, uh, while the, the commission's going for their May 5th meeting, we frankly don't know what's up with their June 2nd meeting. Uh, they, like everyone else, is allowed to, uh, toll. Essentially, there are no deadlines, but my goal has always been not to have people's deadlines sit, but to get things approved so people can be working on things and building things and improving things because that's what keeps the economy going. So, uh, we may have some competition with the Historic Commission on June 2nd. Uh, it's conceivable we may not have enough groundwork done at that point. We may be meeting on our regular date on June 9th. I want to let the board know that I did not believe that May 26th was a viable meeting date based upon my schedule and staffing level.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. But right now, you're saying we've only got a site plan review for one detached apartment? I'm assuming it's an accessory apartment on Hayway Road?
That's correct. 404 Hayway.
Okay.
We, we had hoped that the, uh, the application for 350 Old Meeting House would be complete at that point. But as we know, uh, when people have to create new documents and they have to find those people who do that work, when they mail things to us, let everything sit for 48 hours before we touch it, but we don't even have the application for them. We were hoping you'd have it in last week. So we'll be able to schedule, uh, that 350 Old Meeting House for May 12th. It's a pretty simple application. They're adding one small building to the site. But as I'm that stunk at the party who always goes, "We have regulations and we have to follow them to get things done." So until we've got that complete application, we can't move forward on that.
Right. Okay. So are there any announcements?
Pat, I would just like to bring something up.
Sure.
So I've gotten now seven phone calls regarding uh, our glamping area that the the trees, and I have no recollection of them talking about stripping all the trees out. Um, as a matter of fact, I, I do have some recollection of them not stripping all the trees out. But evidently, it is a disaster there. The airstream trailers are packed very tightly together. The building in the middle, um, I have been told, and I haven't been up there since I got the phone calls, but, or since I got some of the phone calls, that the building in the middle is horrible. And, you know, from, from a proponent that came in and gave us such glowing examples of what this would look like. And when they were engaging the neighbors, um, and working with them, they have not been working with them since. And, um, what one friend of mine, who isn't a butter, said that it has totally destroyed their neighborhood around Sippewist. And that really made me very sad that, you know, I, I thought we did everything we could do to help them to make this a lovely, um, area for people to come and, and go camping. Uh, so I think we all should drive by there. And I don't know what we can do at this point. I spoke to Pat earlier. And I, I'm not, I'm not sure what recourse we have. And I don't know whether Rod has been out to see the site and what the building, you know, department thinks about what's happened there, but it's very upsetting.
Tom?
I have, uh, every time I get a comment from a butter or anything like that, I forward it on to the folks at Blue Flag. Uh, they've been fairly responsive. If you would like, I could reach out to them and see if they want to give the board an update at our next meeting about what's going on at the site.
I think that would be a great idea. I, I'm, I'm very curious as to whether they plan to replace some of the trees that they ripped out, which is the majority of the trees there. I understand they wanted to get rid of some of the trees so that you could, you know, look out the skylight or something and see the stars. I understand that. But you don't have to take out all the trees and, you know, strip it bare to see the, see the stars.
So yes, I think, I think that would be a good thing, Tom, to have an update as a future agenda item. Probably with pictures. Uh, would you agree, Pam? Charlotte?
I have driven by there quite often and looked at it. It looks awful. And I think really it was a failure, at least on my part, to visualize what a large, brilliant aluminum, brand-new airstream trailers were going to look like. I also think that we're looking at it also to one side of the lot. There's an enormous mound of, uh, of dirt that they're planning to block. So that it's very much, uh, a project, um, at an ugly stage. Their intention was to take out some trees. They told us that. We asked them about it. And they are replacing trees. And when, Tom, when you talk with them, maybe if you were to get, uh, and if I were a neighbor, I'd be beside myself. If you, if you could get from them either the landscape plan that they showed us or their updated landscape plan of where are they going to put those trees? And how big will those trees be? How long, uh, do the neighbors have to wait uh, before they, uh, have it back with some semblance of a woodland look? But they have built what we approved.
Tom?
You did it.
So the last conversations we had with the folks at Blue Flag is that some of the neighbors had asked, could they put in larger trees than what they had originally proposed? Uh, they'd already bought the trees. They'd already had those scheduled for, uh, installation. But what they did tell the neighbors is when we get ready to plant those trees that were you, we will invite you out to the site. So you can tell us a little more this way, a little more that way in order to use the neighbors' vistas to make sure that if there's some particular vista that they're seeing that's disturbing them, that they'll arrange that approved landscaping in that particular site to, uh, to improve the, the aesthetics for the neighbors. That was the last conversation we had with them. When I saw the article, the, the letter to the editor in the Enterprise, and I believe I forwarded it on to the board and senior correspondents, I forwarded that on to them as well. So every time we get, uh, uh, some comment about that that I hear about, I let them know and they've been fairly responsive. I would, I would be surprised if they declined our invitation uh, to come and give the board an update because they've been pretty, uh, so they've been pretty responsive and receptive of the things that we've.
Right.
Tom, do you remember them giving us any renderings from the street of what that would look like? I don't remember any renderings of that.
I don't.
Elevations of the buildings. We saw photographs of what a near-stream, uh, glamper or whatever they called it looked like. But we didn't see a rendering of what the campground would look like.
Yeah, I think we've seen landscape plans, uh, and obviously builder plans and things like that. But I don't think we saw a rendering of, uh, and, and as you know, twice they've asked to change the, uh, maintenance building.
Right.
Twice the board has said no.
Right.
So I'm assuming that they're going to build what was originally approved because they've come to us twice and twice the board said, "No, we like what you put together initially."
We're actually getting into this a whole lot deeper than we should be because it's not on our agenda.
Right.
I think, Tom, getting it on our agenda would be very advisable considering all the complaints that people have had and the disappointment in our board members with what they've seen. Okay? So when we move on to general correspondence, there was a letter here from Ed Packard in regard to Bad Martha's and how they were not doing things the way they should be doing them. And you all have that in your packet. It was disturbing. And I asked Tom if he would forward that to Kevin Clower, which he did do. And Kevin got it to his client and there was an immediate response to that. Which I thought was right on target, that they are still in process. And Tom said, in fact, none of our decision, Tom can say it better than I can, but none of our decision would come into play until they actually started building. Tom, do you want to say that better than I have said it?
Yes, I'm scrolling down, uh, for that particular. So what I had emailed the board, just a brief note, the board's site plan approval was for the additions to the building proposed. As noted in Mr. Blum's last paragraph, now we can't afford to build the new storage area that we had planned. My opinion, until Bad Martha is ready to build their addition, they are not on the hook for the conditions in the site plan approval. So the board made conditions. based on changes they were going to make to the site. Now, they have taken out the bocce court is what I understand. I don't know. There's been additional screening around the fire pit and that was my greatest concern was what sort of frivolity will we have at the fire pit? It's going to create some, some noise across the way. But it, the, while we have a site plan approval, until someone pulls a building permit for those improvements, they are not on the hook to do those things. They did start, unfortunately, they pulled out the things that we did not permit from the previous permit. My opinion, they're not on the hook. And I shared that with Ms. Packard today as well.
So you know, it's not that we're ignoring her. She now knows what the status is directly from Mr. Blum as to what's going to be done.
Yeah, and I got an email back from Ms. Packard about five minutes after I got an email from Mr. Hadad about his electrical service. So I haven't read Mrs. Packard's email either.
Okay.
They have put up the fence and it looks good.
Okay. I haven't been by there recently. Jim?
I just wanted to point out that the neighbor's letter was quoting something that she saw on Facebook, which the owner was trying to entice customers to come, how he's going to deal with not having crowds of more than 10 with the virus and having people outside. You know, he was just trying to say you can still come here. We'll be outside instead of inside. And she took that as he's going to be putting more noise. He's just trying to deal with a very, very tough environment. Our restaurants are getting croaked, so I think we need to be careful.
Right.
Folks right now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there was another letter in here too, from Elizabeth Cant. She does not like the, where the friendlies is and what we're thinking about doing there. You have that in your packet too. It's quite negative towards that whole plan. Okay? So that's it for general correspondence. We already went over future agenda items.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to add some future agenda items.
Surely.
One of the things, I, I would like us to revisit the permitting, special permit for the accessory apartment. I think the planning board should still be doing that as opposed to the zoning board. I think for that small component of permitting, since we do the site plan review, I think we should be the ones to still issue the permits for detached dwelling, accessory dwelling. So I'd like to have a discussion about that someday. Then the second thing is, I went through the LCP and we, we're in a very strange time right now, something that we never even anticipated. And I think maybe we need to look at the LCP and maybe have something that addresses epidemics and pandemics and how we respond to them as a town. And I don't know if that should be a separate element or should be part of another element. But we would need to bring in the Board of Health, the Selectmen, the DPW. Have a lot of input for that because the Chamber Commerce businesses. I think we need to make ourselves a little more resilient when it comes to this, that when I'm caught flat footed. And I, I just think it would be a good thing for this town to have something in place so that the townspeople can be informed of what goes on. I know that we have a COVID nursing home here in Falmouth now that was kind of last minute that the governor set up and I've been dealing with them lately. And they're kind of scrambling, flying by the seat of their pants. So I, I think we need to have something more planned out for something like this that we can just go bing, 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 bing. This is what happens when we do this. So that the hospitals are involved, the town is involved, businesses are involved.
Bob, I think in the old local comprehensive plan that ours derived from, I believe there was a unit on, on health services.
Right.
But we specifically didn't do it because so much of it was private.
Right.
So maybe we do need to take a second look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And also in regard to what the county might, I don't know if they even mentioned that in what they're looking at. I don't recall that they did, but yes, I think it's worthy of another look to see.
And I think that could be done with a small LCP committee again.
Sure.
Separate meeting, come up with it, invite people in like we did the first time.
Okay.
I don't know what anyone thought. The Selectmen, I believe last night voted to cancel all previous approved events till August 31st.
Right, they did.
That's a big hit for the summer.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's Road Race, that's
Yep.
Fourth of July.
County Fair, everything.
They, I guess are assuming that this is not going to disappear, that it is still going to be an intense epidemic. Yes, Charlotte?
I just want to inquire where we are with the recodification. This would be a good time with people at home, with time on their hands, for them to be going through the reorganized bylaws. The lawyers and developers, is it out to them yet?
It is not. I got an email from Bob Mitchell asking me if Noreen was back so they could sort of touch base on her concerns about the non-conforming section. As you may know, Noreen was out for a bit. She's on crutch now, but doing well. So is it, is it in the crazy time that we're in, Bob is ready to sort of hit the print key after they sort of iron out those last couple of things with Noreen.
Okay.
So recodification is number one on my list of goodies to do. Number two is Davis Straits. And I did get an email from Jeremy Lake of Union Studios earlier in the week. Actually, at the end of last week about what now, what are you thinking now, since we're not going to have a bunch of people in a room with crayons and things like that? So Michaela and Jeremy and I are going to be on a call tomorrow talking about where we're at and where we're going. At this point, they're in the process of renewing, evaluating our existing zoning. But the question is, what's our, what's our tool moving forward with these sort of public gatherings that we anticipated having to bring people out? So.
And also, so it doesn't get lost from our agenda, we've got John's in pretty good shape draft for the multifamily housing. Sort of is languishing, so we don't want that to fall off the list either.
Well, and keep in mind, we have a capacity issue.
Yeah.
We always will, but with, you know, one person short, we're even less than that, so.
I just want to show that it stays right there on the list.
Yeah.
As, as a matter of priorities and what we can accomplish, I think if we did a little shift and finished John's right now, because I think that's more, less complicated and not such a large scale as Davis Straits, we could actually get something done and we can hold off trying to get the input from people about designing buildings and everything and just move along on, on the multifamily because we should be doing those in a parallel course.
Right. Paul?
I think, I think Bob raises an excellent point about the local comprehensive plan with its implications. But we're also going to have to update the cost of resiliency once we get back to doing that report as well. So I think it's still a bit more than just an element. We have to look at more than one.
Yeah, that's, that, I agree with you, Paul. I've been thinking about that. It's really time to almost do a comprehensive review of the LCP.
I'm not suggesting the whole thing, but I mean, there are some elements we need to work on.
We have to anyway because of the hard commission. They've got new guidelines.
Right. Tom?
Yeah, I just want to just reiterate, and it's the last time I'll say it. Until we are back at full strength in our office, I am, you know, working to get, to keep the Historic Commission afloat. Take care of those things that Cory did, helping with the site plan reviews that Cory and Michaela would typically trade off on. My days are filled just trying to keep physical projects moving. And so those policy issues and things like that, just have to take a backseat because there's not enough time and not enough caffeine to try to get the things done that we would have liked to have got done. It's always a push, always a, every day is, you know, what's our priority? Where are we going to get to with this? And so just mindful that I'm not forgetting anybody and I'm not putting anything off, but we, we got a limited amount of capacity and we're doing the best we can to keep physical projects moving forward. So folks who are building things, living in things and stuff like that, those get to move on.
The other thing we all have to realize, and I don't think it's just my perspective, is so much more can get done when we can meet together, not on Zoom like this. Where you can actually sit around a table, shove papers around and talk face to face with people.
Well, we were cuddling tonight.
Yeah, right.
Well, it's time to go to the 99.
Can I address one thing, please?
Of course, John.
When, when Bob mentioned earlier about the accessory apartment bylaw, when we met with the, we had a joint meeting with the Board of Appeals about a year ago, it was a consensus that the planning board would be the permitting board for the first five years. And then we would see how it went after that. That's what I remember the consensus was.
Yeah, because a lot of things, John, after we've had experience with them, we can shift off to the ZBA, but this, in fact, we may not want to.
Right, but we, we had, we all agreed to a trial of the first five years.
You're absolutely right. We did.
That the, that the ZBA would do a trial of five years?
The planning board was doing a trial because the, it's split approvals.
Right.
When we had our joint, when we had our joint meeting with them, that's what the agreement was.
Yeah.
But, but that's a bylaw change.
It would be a bylaw change, correct. If, if there were any change, it would be a bylaw change.
Do it. I'm not against it. It's just not as easy.
No, it just isn't snapping your fingers and it's done. Paul, you wanted to say something.
Make a motion we adjourn.
I knew that.
I'll second that motion.
All right. We are adjourned at 8:52.
Thank you all. Be safe.
Stay well, everybody.